Good evening and welcome to the February 10, 2020, meeting of the Shawnee City Council. I'd ask that you please silence your electronic devices at this time. I'm Mayor Michelle Disser. I'll be chairing this meeting. I'll do a roll call at this time. Councilmember Thomas?
Present.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Present.
Councilmember Kemmling?
Present.
Councilmember Larson-Bennell?
Present.
Councilmember Nappin?
Present.
Councilmember Constance?
Present.
Councilmember Chaffee?
Present.
Thank you. Please stand. Join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. To the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. During the meeting, I'll offer the opportunity for public input. If you'd like to speak to the council at any of those times, please come forward to the microphone. I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, and then you may offer your comments. So that members of the audience can hear your comments, I would ask that you speak directly to the microphone. By policy, comments are limited to five minutes. No person may speak more than twice to any one agenda item. Only comments related to city business are permitted. Comments and remarks that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous are not permitted. Disruptive acts are not permitted. In order to conduct an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified meeting, individuals who do not limit their comments to the business or affairs of the city, or who resort to insults, name-calling, et cetera, will be directed to cease and conclude their public comments. After you're finished, please sign the form on the podium to ensure we have an accurate record of your name and address. In addition, while we won't do a roll call vote on every vote, I will state councilmembers' names who vote in minority, so that our listening audience will have a clear and accurate record of the vote. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is mayor's items. I do not have anything tonight. Next item is business from the floor. Is there anyone who has comments on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Chris Durbin, 7412 McCoy Street. Madam Mayor, "The Citizens for a Better Shawnee" is a committee that was formed out of interest by and for the citizens of Shawnee. Our mission has been and will continue to be about fiscal responsibility in our city government. But what is a better Shawnee? A better Shawnee is not about saying no to commercial development. A better Shawnee is not about saying no to city projects. A better Shawnee is a Shawnee where the governing body considers the citizens first. A better Shawnee is a Shawnee where city staff recognize that the citizens are their employer. A better Shawnee is a Shawnee where all city leadership can have open, meaningful, and respectful discourse with the citizens. Granted, we will not always agree on the issues. There will never, there will be ideological differences, but there is one thing that should never happen: hateful rhetoric, personal attacks, and lies. Some individuals in our city have done just that. Their comments are the exact opposite of what defines a better Shawnee. Casey Case Bolt, David Williams, Mike Frisell, and myself, as the leadership team for the citizens of a better Shawnee, make no reservations and are condemnation of these attacks. They are uncalled for and represent a level of evilness that has no business in our city. Putting it simply, these individuals and their opinions do not represent those of our committee or the citizens of this beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Does anyone else who has comments on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Dave Williams, 22119 West 70th Street, Shawnee, Kansas. Wow. Looks like you've got a huge task this year with an $88 million budget. I would like to state, as my colleague just stated, that what I'm going to present tonight is not an attack on the council or the city council. I'm sure that many of the practices that I'm going to bring up tonight have started long before any of you on the council or our city management. What I don't know about, well, I don't know about you, but this last year, my property tax went up again 7%. And that was without the community center, and that was proposed and defeated last year. I also understand that only a portion of that comes to this city. I completely understand that. But some did, okay? Some funds came. I come from 50 years of work experience in corporate America, okay? My major time with this, with this was with the world's largest office equipment company, and then the largest MRO safety company in the U.S. MRO stands for maintenance, repair, and operation of buildings and things like that. I have an experience of many positions from down-the-street sales rep to a district manager responsible for over 450 locations across the U.S. and Canada. I cannot remember ever not being involved in a documented cost savings program to overall reduce operational costs. Every year, I've had to reduce my spending. I always had a spending goal, and I had to look at everything and everywhere in my operations to reduce costs. What does that have to do with us here today? On May 7, 2019, I asked the city manager Nolan Sutherland, councilmembers Mickey Sanford and Lindsay Constance if the city of Shawnee had a cost savings or a quality program, and I received the reply from Mr. Sutherland on May 12, stating, quote, "Overall, we are truly have a culture of promoting cost savings and process improvement in every way. Along with that comes with a humble attitude that many of our, that many in our organization that, to your point, we do not promote the results enough. As someone that has worked in three other communities, we do a remarkable job in stretching every dollar." I was impressed. But I started reviewing the posted check registers that have been approved at every, at the last of every meeting that I've attended or listened to on the Internet. I was, and I was surprised that there was no questions ever asked with the ones that I've listened to or in attendance. I'm not saying that members of the council or other people had not reached out for clarification of these expenditures. Only seeing the register just for a few days before a council meeting, I can totally understand. When you roll them up, use some filters and some pivot tables, things start to jump out at you. It's kind of like a test for blood sugar daily, okay? It might be good, might be so-so, and then, oh, no, I shouldn't have ate that ice cream. But when, when you get your A1C test done every six months in review, that's when the big picture is at, or when you see the big picture and what something must need to happen. I have reviewed all the check registers since January or July 2019, and right off, a couple of nuggets of opportunity jumped out. It looks like the city was using multiple office equipment suppliers. One of the positions that I held as a sales manager for Facilities Management Group, where we, my team would come in to a client's location and drill down to all the areas of the business to find documented reductions of costs and process improvement, so I can recognize an opportunity when I see it. In reaching out to the city manager again, I was told that the city of Shawnee did not have a centralized purchase agreement, and let each department purchase their own equipment. I received another email back from Mr. Sutherland, and I quote, "I will share with you that this is something we are looking at in terms of consolidation and elimination of machines, vendor selection, and agreements overlap. From my past experience doing this in other cities, there is savings. If you would like to assist in this process with your past career experience, I can loop you in on this when it starts to review. Overall, we will review the, we are also reviewing the purchase policies and bringing them up to date with the council also."
Mr. Williams? Sorry to interrupt. I will have to get a motion to continue your time just because of policy, so that we're consistent with policy, so...
Five more minutes.
I'd like to, I'll make a motion. Can we extend it by another five minutes?
Okay. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Please continue.
Okay, again, I felt good about the city management and the point to see where we would, to implement cost savings. I continued my research. I looked at office supplies and MRO supplies, as well as Amazon spend. I was, I was shocked with how much Amazon spend, that we spend. Amazon is not the cheapest in town. It's usually because of convenience that you'll get it tomorrow. As you'll notice, in my review, I was shocked to find out, you know, because it kind of leads in different directions. Instead of costs, you're starting to look at different practices. And with all these purchase agreements or purchase, or buying, it was kind of shocking to see where all these were happening. In the process here, I'm finding out that of the 347 employees, full-time employees that the city has, 234 of them are carrying credit cards, or P cards, okay, to enable them to buy whatever they might want or need. My question is why? I was so concerned that I sat down with my former treasurer of my HOA, who is now the vice president of source, strategic sourcing for a local firm. She thought it was odd also. As I started my review, I thought maybe we had a, an agreement with Office Depot, and maybe we do. I was surprised at how many iPad covers or cases that we were buying through this period that I looked at. But really, what stood out when I started looking at it is, is the example that jumped out at me was the purchase of iPad cases from Amazon. Same month, same department. One of the pads was $89.95. These are not pads, these are cases. The next one was $99.95. Third one was $125.99. My question is, why? Isn't the individual, why is the individual department and the, or an individual going to Walmart, Amazon, and elsewhere to buy their iPad cases? Someone in IT or purchasing should have bought those in bulk, issued them when they got their iPad. The next example is a wireless mouse for 11 bucks. Pretty reasonable price, right? Purchased from Walmart, but again, a city employee left their post, drove out to Walmart, shopped for the product, and then returned, taking themselves off-post for probably 45 minutes. When you look at a $50,000 salary, that's about $29 worth of time taken away from post, okay? My last example, which is probably the most interesting, is, was in the safety area, and I saw safety products being bought from Walmart, Amazon, and even Hy-Vee. But this one stood out to me because of my background in, with the safety company. It was a safety vest, purchased at Cabela's. I was aware that, I was, was not aware of Cabela's being a work safety provider, and the vest is, well, is the vest OSHA or CSA-approved. Why are we not approving safety items for other people like we are for our police and fire? I really see a personal injury suit happening with that. Wrapping up, you know, I think, again, we'd spend a lot of money, but again, there should be a documented cost savings, quality product, or program within the city. You're a big business. My last budget was $43 million. They wouldn't let me go without documenting a 15% savings every year finding that. So my recommendations: to a remarkable job of stretching every dollar. One, put a moratorium on all purchases from Amazon. They're not the cheapest. I'll guarantee you, you just tell me what you want to buy, I'll buy it cheaper here locally. Recall all P cards, except director, and maybe their admin aide. Change the personal parameters in the P card book from department and division purchasing control to purchasing only. And then, basically, look at your top 10 spend categories and start working with partners that will, might save you some money. I will guarantee you almost that with the right suppliers, you will make 15%. With that, I think, and the last point is having our new finance director put in place a sourcing team, together with a department of shareholders, to develop and execute sourcing solutions with the cost, or for the cost savings and goals of at least 15%. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I'm sure Nolan will, he was taking notes, so I'm sure he'll look into all those, because obviously, we want to be the most efficient and conservative with taxpayers' dollars as possible. A couple of things I can just think of off top of head, though, is just, like, with the iPad cases, I do know that, like, if you're a public works employee, you need more of that OtterBox type case that's waterproof and weatherproof and everything versus one of us councilmembers. We have the lesser tough-type case, and like with the, the P cards, the reasons why our police officers and public works and fire department have them is because they're filling up the vehicles, and when they're on duty, they can't wait for a sergeant to come if they've got to put gas in the car or the fire truck in the public works vehicle. So those are just some examples of where it is a little bit different than a normal business, but, I mean, we'll definitely look into the concerns that you've raised.
One thing I missed here, and maybe, maybe I wasn't clear, okay? The spend is not the big thing to me anymore. What I really think, you know, and I thought there was going to be some cost savings, that you should be able to generate some cost savings, okay? Everybody should be able to, the right negotiations. But what I really see here, and my thought process went completely differently after I went through the whole process, and what I saw was that we're losing productivity from our people by having them go out and purchase their own thing, okay? And, and also, you're putting them in harm's way, is where I'm going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who has comments on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, next item is public items. Item number one is to consider Resolution Number 1904, providing for the sale of general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2020, on March 23, 2020. On January 27, 2020, the governing body adopted Resolution Numbers 1902 and 1903, authorizing the issuance of bonds for the acquisition of streetlights, including an LED conversion and a fire truck and equipment for Fire Station 72. The bonds will be issued for 10 years in the principal amount of approximately $4,910,000, and the annual payments are included in the debt service fund in the 2020 budget. The recommended action is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1904. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Who do approve?
Second. Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is staff items. Item number one is to consider accepting the Reimagine 75th Street Corridor Study. In the fall of 2018, the city was awarded a Planning Sustainable Places grant by the Mid-America Regional Council to complete Reimagine 75th: Pedestrian Streetscape and Corridor Amenity Design Guide. The study recommends various improvements to the corridor. Any improvements would be included to a future project that would be brought back to the governing body for consideration. Representatives from Trans Systems, the city's consultant, will provide an overview.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Malmborg. I'm the deputy director of community development. I'm here tonight to introduce a couple of people that were very important to this project, our consultant, Trans Systems, and also the Mid-America Regional Council. We've been working on this project with them for quite some time now. And with that being said, I want to introduce Alex Rotenberry with the Mid-America Regional Council, and Deanne Winkleman with Trans Systems. And Deanne's going to give a short presentation overview of a pretty lengthy study that you can see in your packet and find on our website. This is the Reimagine 75th Street study, and it has to do with 75th Street from approximately Quavira to Schweitzer. So with that being said, Deanne?
Thank you. Thank you for having me here this evening. As Stephanie said, my name is Deanne Winkleman. I am a project manager and transportation planner at Trans Systems. I'm also a Shawnee resident, and I live a couple miles from this corridor, so I particularly enjoyed working on this project for you. As Stephanie said, this project received funding from the Mid-America Regional Council last year to look at completing its elements, to make sure this corridor is safe and aesthetically pleasing for all users. As she said, we're also looking at the one-mile segment of 75th Street from Quavira to Schweitzer, which is where the city limits ends. This is really meant to be a long-term plan to help you make funding decisions over the next several years, but as you might be aware, there is an upcoming 2020 project for 75th Street that's already been included in your capital improvement program. So there is some opportunity to include recommendations out of this study into that planned project as well. Really, we're looking at four key elements here: bicycle pedestrian connections, enhancing bus stops, looking at streetscape amenities, and then integrating future redevelopment opportunities. I'd like to point out, we did some pretty extensive community engagement, and I'm going through some of the survey results throughout this presentation. Back in May, we had our first public meeting at Shawano Elementary, as well as an online survey that received over 650 responses. This meeting really focused on a visual preference survey to get an initial idea of what people wanted to see along the corridor. Then after developing several alternatives, we came back in September and did another round of meetings and an online survey, and we had people kind of rank and evaluate the different options, so we knew what the preferences were moving forward. I'm going to try to keep it brief. As Stephanie said, it's a pretty extensive report, so if you have questions as I go along, please feel free to ask me if I skip over something. For bicycle and pedestrian facilities, one of the key goals was eventually connecting the Blackfish Parkway Trail to the west, to the Turkey Creek Trail, which is in Miriam. Traffic volumes on this segment of 75th Street go all the way up to 30,000 vehicles per day, so it's really not a candidate to reduce lanes. Therefore, we had to be a little bit creative in trying to figure out how we could fit in some bicycle and pedestrian amenities. If we look at the center turn lane, it's 16 feet, which is pretty wide for a corridor, so we are recommending narrowing that to a 12-foot center turn lane and adding in a shared-use path, which was the preference among the residents. Most people wanted an eight-foot path, which gives you a little bit more of a buffer from vehicular traffic as well. We're looking at putting this on the south side. There's a couple of reasons for that. The key ones being that most of the pedestrian activity we noticed was on the south side, especially with students walking to the elementary school, and there's also less driveways and conflict points on the south side as well. Long-term, looking at connecting to the Turkey Creek Trail, as I mentioned, the city limits end at Schweitzer, so at some point, you're going to have to coordinate with Miriam and/or Overland Park. So we looked at a couple of different options you could consider in the future. And the most popular one was Option A, which continues along the south side of 75th Street and then goes underneath the 75th Street Bridge. If you're familiar with Turkey Creek going under Johnson Drive, it would be a similar type of underpass there. Other options that rated favorably were both Option B and C, which keeps you within city limits for the most part, and takes you up to the trail spur to eventually get to Turkey Creek Trail. The least popular, which isn't surprising, was Option D. It continues to run along the bottom of 75th, but then you have to cross at grade at the signalized crossing there, which, as most of you know, is a pretty busy intersection coming off the interstate. Another key aspect of the bicycle and pedestrian facilities was looking at safe crossings to school, with both Trail Ridge and Shawano being here along the study area. Shawano got a lot of attention during the public meetings, especially improving that existing pedestrian crossing that has the overhead signal right now. In the short term, we recommend putting in a pedestrian refuge with a median and low landscaping, so you're not blocking visibility of the children crossing the street, but it gives it a little bit more of a defined area for vehicles going along 75th Street. In the long term, we also looked at the possibility of realigning the Arbor Square Apartment driveway, which you can see in the bottom-left corner, and realigning that with Flint Street, you could create kind of a standard four-legged intersection and add a signal there if you wanted to. Last in the bicycle and pedestrian facilities was looking at public-to-private path connections, making sure that people can go from the public sidewalk to the building entrance. If you walk along this corridor at all, you'll notice that along most of the commercial areas and apartment complexes, you can't get to that internal pedestrian network. So in the report, we've identified several areas where you could work with property owners and consider improving that. One of the key obvious ones is a gap between the Arbor Square Apartments and the crossing at the elementary school. Depending on the, the time of year and the weather, you can kind of see a cow path where those kids are crossing along there to get to the crossing. Moving along to transit facilities, there are two routes that currently use the segment of 75th Street, the most popular and heavily-used one being Route 475, which travels pretty extensively east to west throughout the region. Most people prefer the standard shelter that aligns with the Ride KC brand as the preferred amenity, compared to a decorative shelter that might cost a little bit more money, or even something as simple as a bench. We then also asked them at the next public meeting, how do we decide which bus stops to prioritize first for improvements? And the most popular answer was ridership, which makes a lot of sense to us as well. The higher ridership stops tend to be clustered near the Quavira intersection, so the report highlights those eight as the most common ones that you might want to improve first. Those ones also tend to have a little bit more rideaway availability, which was another thing that was important to residents, so that you weren't coordinating with the private property owners as much, you were using the rideaway that was available to you. This example I pulled from the report, D, right there at the Quavira and 75th Street intersection, you can see, you've got about 15 feet of rideaway there. The path could already be behind the shelter, and it was one of the more higher ridership stops along the corridor. There are several components for the streetscape amenities that we looked at. The first one was looking at installing street trees, some kind of combination street pedestrian lighting, and plant material pockets. The rideaway varies between 80 to 95 feet, so where you have a bit more room, you have a bit more creativity where you can put in some of these landscaping pockets. So the report includes some typical sections based upon the rideaway, kind of what your options are. We also looked at the possibility of making 75th Street more of a parkway with medians. This would be similar to what you're used to on Shawnee Mission, on 87th and Lenexa, even Quavira south of 75th Street. This might be a bit more of a long-term plan as well, so as redevelopment occurs, you could look at shared driveways and designating access points, but really identifying those areas where you would want key left-turn movements, and you could use the medians for some great landscaping opportunities as well. We focused a lot on intersections, and we did some peak traffic counts, as well as some site observations at Schweitzer, at Neiman, and at Quavira. Schweitzer operates pretty well as it is, but we do have some recommendations for Neiman and Quavira. The biggest one at Neiman is that you could remove that dedicated eastbound right turn lane. It has very low use, and you could take that space for some streetscape amenities there. At Quavira, the biggest recommendation is looking at that westbound movement and improving the traffic signal phasing there, particularly looking at dedicated dual westbound left-turn lanes, which is a pretty heavy movement, as some of you are probably familiar with. From the pedestrian perspective, for intersection safety, we asked people to rank their top priorities there as well. Pedestrian lighting was very important, followed by improved ADA curb ramps. The directional curb ramps help, especially at Trail Ridge, to let the students know what direction they're going, and the motorists then know a little bit more as well, rather than the really wide curb ramp that you sometimes see at intersections. than the really wide curb ramp that you sometimes see at intersections. Aesthetic treatments like corner landscaping and decorative crosswalks also received some attention, but they were a lower priority than some of the safety features. And last but not least, for the streetscape amenities, if you drive along Seventy-Fifth Street, you may know that the Southern Star Gas Facility is there with a pretty old-looking wooden fence and some barbed wire there as well, so that was another focus area for this study. A lot of people preferred a solid or a masonry wall material, and then they also expressed some interest in public art and landscaping. So we developed a series of amenity walls, the one here on the slide being the one that received the highest rating, incorporating some public art and panels that you could switch out with some low landscaping. The last of those four key elements is redevelopment opportunities. There are several aging commercial areas along Seventy-Fifth Street, so we've identified those along the corridor. A lot of people expressed some interest in building frontage closer to the street, whether it was full frontage or partial frontage, as compared to the large-lot parking or the strip mall parking that you see in a lot of areas. Also, the possibility of aggregating some of these smaller parcels. So when we looked at these areas, we put together some very basic but conceptual ideas. The most important factor was consolidating access. So as you aggregate parcels, looking at shared driveways and shared parking. Then finding ways to incorporate open space amenities, and then although they liked the building frontage, it was the lower of the priorities when looking at redevelopment opportunities. That was a very quick summary. Any questions, any comments? I would be happy to answer, or if you have questions for Stephanie as well, we'd be happy to-
Any questions, Ms. Thomas?
I love what you've done. This is a great presentation. I would like to know, how are you working with KC Ride? Because I know we've heard about routes being cut and streamlined and all of that type of thing. How many stops are on this route, and how many do we need to really advocate to maintain and keep?
I believe there's 13 stops kind of in the study area that we looked at. I know it's on the table that Route 402, which is the one that travels along Neiman and then part of Seventy-Fifth and then Quavira, is currently on the table to be removed. It has pretty low ridership. But Seventy-Fifth Street is one of the two, Route 475, one of the two heavier ones in Johnson County, along with Metcalf Avenue being the other one. So Ride KC is a really big advocate for particularly along Seventy-Fifth Street and Quavira there. I will say the ridership data we have is a little bit outdated. Johnson County is currently working on putting new counters on their buses this year, so we might have a little bit more information here soon. But Metcalf and Seventy-Fifth Street are definitely big priorities for Ride KC.
Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
Sorry. I spoke with the county this morning because I also saw that article in The Star and was concerned that the 402 was being eliminated, or at least proposed, because that's the one currently going down Neiman, and we have transit stops invested in Neiman now. So they have told me that the 402 is on the table to be eliminated, but the 403 would be rerouted to go up Neiman and virtually take its place. So we will still, if their recommendations go through as they're going to be presented, we would still have bus service along Neiman Road.
That's good to know. I did wonder, because even though I didn't know numbers, just driving that corridor every single day, there's always people there waiting for the bus, and there's always people walking on those sidewalks. So it's like, yeah, somebody has to pick them up, right? Any other questions from the council, Ms. Chalfy?
I just wanted to thank you. I actually pored over all 60-plus pages of this and sort of couldn't put it down. It's very exciting, and I think the level of detail that went into this study is remarkable, and the trail connections and the safety and the beautification, I think, I'm just really impressed with the level of work that went into this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Zimmerman?
No questions, just a comment. I would echo Joe Chalfy's comments, and I went to the little workshop he had for the public. It seemed to me you had a pretty good turnout of people and a lot of interest, so thank you for the effort.
Absolutely. I'm excited to see changes, like I said, professionally and personally.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council? Does anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, the recommended action is to consider accepting the study. Thank you. I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve the study.
Second. Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number two is to consider bids. Award contract number 2020008 for the 2020 Mill and Overlay. Bids were received from five contractors on January 31st, 2020. Staff recommends award the bid to McInnany Construction Shawnee, Kansas, in the amount of $5,810,000. The contract includes approximately 41.7 lane miles of mill and overlay and curb and sidewalk repairs. It addresses all citizen curb and sidewalk repair requests through December 1st, 2019. Recommended actions: Consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract as approved by the city attorney. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item number three is to consider bids. Award contract number 202009 for the 2020 mowing contract. Bids were received from three contractors on January 30th, 2020. Staff recommends awarding the bid to Kansas Land Management in the amount of $239,878. This contract encompasses, oh my gosh, over 60 locations throughout the city. The contract includes parks, cemetery, facility, and rideaway mowing and trimming. The recommended action is to consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract as approved by the city attorney. Does anyone on the council have any questions? How many? Yes, Ms. Thomas?
How many acres is that? I know it's 60 stops, 60 locations, but in general, about how many acres is that?
Mrs. Guard?
We don't generally count by acres, just because some areas are adjusted frequently, rideaway mowing, to be particular. So we don't necessarily do it by acreage, we do it by mowing count, how many times per year.
Any other questions from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item number four is to consider approving the name Wilder Bluff for the proposed park at 55th Street and Belmont Drive. The proposed 40-acre park is included in the 2020-2029 Capital Improvement Program is funded from the Parks and Pipe Sales Tax. In order to come up with a name for the park, staff worked with the Monticello Historical Society, held public meetings to get feedback, and presented findings to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The Parks Board is recommending the name Wilder Bluff. The recommended action is consider approving the name Wilder Bluff for the park. You want to say something, Mr. Holman?
Oh, I was just-
Oh.
Did you want me to?
Sure.
Okay. No, we have a park coming, which is very exciting, and we need a park name. So we did reach out to the historical society, asked them for seven, or asked them for names. I think they came back with like seven names with a little paragraph under each name, just to kind of give you the flair of what, how the thought and the history of the area was. And at our first public meeting, I believe Kurt was there, and we had 60-plus at both meetings. So we've had, the turnout's been awesome for both public meetings. We had the boards where we had pictures, and then you would put dots on areas that you would like, that we had different shelters, playground equipment, just all kinds of activities. And then the other, the last board was the name. And so we had six green dots that they could pick from all seven boards of things that they'd like. And then this time, kind of changed it up. We had three red dots, that things that definitely you did not want in the park, or you definitely did not want the name. So they came out, and then our last public meeting, we were presenting, and a resident asked what the final count was, and it was Wilder Bluff. And Lisa and Tammy were at that meeting, and we had a nice round of applause. So I think it's been a great process involving the Monticello Historical Society, which I believe Lisa's on. So I think, and then with the public and the voting, and so I think it turned out very nice.
Yeah.
And everyone seems to be happy.
Yeah, and I absolutely love the fact that the public is in agreement with definitely Lisa of having that historical value put, because Shawnee has such a strong history and foundation, that the fact that everything new that we do, we try to incorporate that history in there so we don't lose it. And for generations to come, as kids are playing at that park, and they're like, why is it called Wilder Bluff? And then they go to learn why, and you know, just like you've done with Garrett Park and the stolen, I mean, they all have their-
And again, we will have an interpretive panel that explains Wilder, explains the name.
Awesome. And it'll go in along with our geocaching program that we're working on. Okay, any questions from the council?
Yeah, just make a quick comment. So for those of you that aren't aware of the origination of the name Wilder Bluff, it really is very simple. This area where the park is located was always referred to as Wilder Bluff because it overlooked the old town of Wilder, so it makes sense. I will say that I am a member of the Historical Society. I got to submit a name, and they did not choose my name, so a little conflicted about that. But this is also, this is also the area where the Thomas Anderson, Thomas Anderson built his house. And for those of you that want to hear a good story, his escape from a prisoner-of-war camp and walking basically from the southern United States all the way up to Wisconsin has really, that history and that story is really impressive. It's an astounding story. It also, elements of the story were built into the house that he built, like there were architectural elements that you can still see today that have to do with his escape from this camp and the journey that he took. It is such an incredible historical area, and I'm so glad that we can recognize it with such a strong name.
Mr. Nappin?
Yeah, as the other representative from Ward Three, I'd just say, all the residents are super excited to see this come, everybody that I've talked to. And no disrespect to Lisa, but I saw the names, and Wilder Bluff was the best.
You knew the story behind the-
And I know we're just here for the purposes of approving the park name, but I want to get in my plug. The one thing, a request that I'd have, Neil, that you keep an eye on, is that we do place a no-parking sign on 53rd Place. It's the stub, the street stub that goes in, and so that's one resident concern, but that could be for another night.
And that stub will be gone. I mean, our proposal has that gone.
Good.
And we will, we will be coming back with the design of both designs brought into one on the 24th.
Very happy to hear that.
We're taking it to, we took it to Park Board, and then we'll take it to next Wednesday. It will go to Planning Commission, and then the 24th, you'll get to see the park.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Thomas?
Can we, Lisa mentioned a story, and that, I want to know the whole story, but can we have something at the park that shares some of that information?
Oh, yes, yeah. And for the history elements, like Garrett Park and some of the other areas-
That'll all be-
We have, we have history panels that the Monticello Historical Society and then our, I'm sure Charlie Potler, the museum director, we will write those and have those published.
Good, okay.
And then for the last five years, I've been trying very, very hard to get us digital so that as we visit all of our Shawnee historical sites, that pictures and stories and stuff will pop up on your little app on your phone as well. I'm still working with Neil on that.
We'll get it.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Thank you, Neil.
So moved.
Prove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item number five is to consider approving final plans and authorizing staff to bid Dr. Sullivan's House, Contract Number One, Building Relocation. This project is included in the 2020-2029 Capital Improvement Program. The strategic plan for Shawnee Town 1929 is budgeted in the Special Park and Recreation Fund. It is important to note that these funds come from the state liquor tax and can only be used for park and recreation purposes. Dr. Sullivan's House is the next building scheduled for construction at the museum. Final plans are complete, and staff is ready to bid the building relocation services. Once bids are received, a contract would come back to the governing body for consideration. The Friends of Shawnee Town have contributed $100,000 toward the project, and the project budget is now at $580,000. The recommended action is to consider approving the final plans and authorizing staff to bid the relocation of the building. This is only the bid. Does anyone on the council have any questions?
Yeah, is this for bid?
Yes, this is just for the bid. Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I'm glad for that clarification, but there's some other comments on this. It's a lot of money, and so I'm hoping these bids will come in reasonable so that we can go with it, because I'm quite a fan of Old Shawnee Town, and I think it's a big deal for our community. We talked about it quite a bit in our offsite this weekend about how that's one of those things that's already there, we could expand upon and build and make it into something special. I've had some discussions with a few people about, I'd like to see it become more of a living museum instead of a static museum. I'd love to see some places there where you could actually go and maybe have something to eat, maybe go to the, maybe go to the old ancient drugstore and get an old-fashioned sassafras or a soda or something, maybe have a little chapel in there where people are actually getting married in there and then using our town hall to be the reception area. And I don't know, I'd just like to see something where I could go there and actually do something else while I'm there, and other than just look at the old stuff while I'm there. Hey, the kids are hungry or they're thirsty, we can, you know, there's other things, and that maybe even brings some income in for the society that manages that. But I don't know, I'm just seeing, I'm just seeing some visionary stuff where you could really do a lot more if we were able to, and I'd like to see us go in that direction if we could as well.
Sassafras.
Yeah, I would've said root beer, but you know, that doesn't sound 1929. I'd love something a little older.
And they could sell the butter crackers with onion right out of the farmhouse. Those are my-
I'm telling you, if you've got a smokehouse there, smoke some ribs, let's sell those too.
Any other, Mr. Nappin?
Yeah, so this is just a bid, which is why I'm going to vote for it. But I would just comment, I'm looking forward, I think we're going to take a site tour as a council here in the next couple months and learn a lot more about Old Shawnee Town. It's a super important place, but I am looking forward to learning more about it, and attendance, more in-depth on the budget, and all of those types of things, because we do have a lot, I mean, it's like 20 buildings now. So the question is, you know, what's the long-term plan? And that's what I'm interested in looking into and how much we want to spend on that. So I will be voting for this.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Chris Durbin, 7412 McCoy Street. I'm curious if anybody knows what kind of contracting or pricing structure we're going after for these bids?
As far as-
Are we, are we pursuing like cost-plus structure or a fixed price, unit price? I mean, how are we, how are we asking for bids?
Oh. Come in with the answer.
I can answer that. Bert Schnetkokey, Senior Project Engineer, Facilities and Parks. We're asking for a lump sum cost for the relocation portion. Give us a lump sum cost to prep the building and move it to Shawnee Town. A part of the contract does have the foundation in it. We don't have the foundation designed at this time, so we're asking for unit prices on that portion of the work. Okay, all competitively bid.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Jenkins?
Just a, just a final thing. We're kind of looking at this thing from one angle right now, and that is getting the Sullivan House and moving it there. If those numbers come in ugly and we don't like those very much, what's Plan B? To build one perhaps that looks really good, and perhaps we could even get some material from the house over there and add them on. I just think there's some other options here, I just want to make sure we're not closing any doors, and I'd like to have more information on the table, I guess where I'm at. So if this doesn't work, because they come in with a horrendous bid, what's our fallback position so we can move ahead and do something?
Hi, everyone. My name's Charlie Potler, I'm the museum director at Shawnee Town 1929.
So we have several experts in the room today. Trudy Faulkner is our historic architect with Strata, and she's been working with us since the get-go. But I figured I would come up and just say a little bit, because I was the one that found the house, excuse me, probably about three years ago is when this house was brought to my attention. And I kind of put it off and put it off because I didn't want another, because we weren't even talking about the Dr. Sullivan project yet. I had several other projects as part of our strategic plan that we were working through. By the time I finally got out there, about eight months later and had time to do it, I was blown away by the amount of historical integrity still in this house. And by that time, I had been with the City of Shawnee since 2012, and I'd worked through several of these projects. And I knew what the cost per square foot was for new construction. And on the last buildings that we built, the cost is $300 per square foot. So when we're looking at replicating a lot of historical detail, all the gingerbread trim, all the doors, door frames, window sashes, all that detail that back in 1915 didn't cost as much, but today to replicate, to bring an authentic restoration to the public, it's just a horrendous cost. So to answer your question, if the numbers come in really high, we still want to work within our budget. So we're going to try and avoid that. But if the numbers come in really high, then we're going to take a fresh look at the project and make sure that we are not going over the budget to make it happen. So either, and I don't know what that fresh look will be exactly, if we would still bring it in but not do as complete a restoration, I don't know if that's one option. Or if we would build it from new and not have an original building, but leave out some of the historical details that are so costly, that might be another option. I'm not going to lay out all the options now, because I'd really like to get this thing bid so that we have a much firmer idea of what this cost is going to be. This contract one is for the house relocation and the possible movement of power lines, figuring out the route that it's going to take, and the foundation itself, the foundation reconstruction. So once we get those numbers back, then we'll have a much clearer indication of if this project is doable or not. I think it's going to be doable, but I'd really like to just see for sure.
Any other questions, Ms. Thomas?
I think it's important to note as well that this is not Dr. Sullivan's House. This is a home that is in southern Johnson County. He resided here. And if I read the materials correctly, we really don't know that much about the home he lived in.
We know what his house looked like, the second house after our time period at the museum. So, but his house that he lived in during our time period, and he was the most prominent doctor in town back in the 20s. That house was torn down in the 40s, we believe. So there are not any extant photos, any existing photos of that house. But the thing that's really attractive about this house that we've been offered for free, it is very typical of balloon frame construction from that early part of the 20th century, very typical of a house that you would, even though it was on a farm back then, very typical of a house that you would find in town. So, and it's the right square footage. It's not too ostentatious. It's very much a very simple house that fits in beautifully with our mission. If I would design a house not knowing that that one exists, I couldn't, I would design that house because it's just so perfect for what we're looking for.
And the house is about 1,370 square feet. So it's really, by today's standards, pretty small.
I think once we take off the 1950s addition, which is on the very back, it's around 1,130 square feet. Is that correct?
Okay. And five rooms. So it's a two-bedroom, one-bath kitchen, living room.
Yeah.
Dining room.
So, yeah.
You looking to move? I just looked up a lot of stuff. Tax rules say that differently. Johnson County appraisers have identified it a little bit different than that.
And I would like to add that this is not the first house that we're interested in preserving. House preservation building, preserving our early architecture is really what started the museum back in 1966. It was actually the second attempt. The first attempt didn't fail. But being Shawnee people, they're tenacious, and they don't give up. So they saved the second building that was offered to them that was in danger of being demolished, because that's where Vitacraft Corporation went. And then in the 1970s, we saved another building called the Hart House here in Shawnee. And in the 80s, we saved the Bender Barn and the Bender Smokehouse. And then the school that's down, was down in Olathe. Now it's now at Shawnee Town. So this house, I think, fulfills our educational mission quite nicely. And I think in the long run, it's going to be cheaper than building it from scratch. But we'll let the bids tell us that.
Well, I'd just also like to say that my husband and I own an 1897 farmhouse that's original to Shawnee, and we live on the farm. We built our home on that acreage, and we have a tremendous passion for heritage, authenticity, all of those types of things. Restoring original floors and exposing those. And when we found, started going through layers, you had newsprint under one layer of vinyl from 1941. So it's a neat thing. All about it.
Yeah, you've got the bug.
All about preserving our history. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? We already did that. Okay. I will accept a motion.
Move to approve the bid process.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Item number one is to ratify the semi-monthly claim for February 10th, 2020, in the amount of $4,315,849.41. I want to let everyone know the check register looks a little different than it did in the past. We transitioned to a new finance software, and staff is working with the vendor on a customized report to show more details on the register. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider canceling the March 9th, 2020 city council meeting due to the National League of Cities Conference. Staff is recommending canceling the March 9th, 2020 city council meeting. Is there any discussion from the council? Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, so I think we ought to just go ahead and keep the meeting as scheduled. From my understanding, there's only going to be two people missing that night. And that way, we could continue to move business forward. We have more than a quorum, so there's really no need to cancel it unless there's some other reason that I'm not aware of.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Okay. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion if you're wanting to. I guess we don't need a motion to keep the meeting, do we?
May I ask one question? How many staff members are going to be at NLC that might be involved in creating the agenda?
Just me. So I think we were, I was waiting to kind of hear, there was two or three other council members, I think, who were kind of trying to make a decision whether they were going. So I think as of now, we just have two council members and myself at the current moment. So.
Mr. Jenkins?
And just piggybacking on that, there's no reason to delay somebody's business that they want to get done. I did, I would like to say some additional guidance that if there, if something surfaces between now and then, which we don't really anticipate, but something that's controversial or something of that nature, that part not be placed on that agenda and be placed on a subsequent agenda. But routine business would move forward.
Ms. Chaffey?
I would echo that. I think if there's something that, again, is a big topic or something that big that pops up in the meantime, then I would request that that be pushed back. But other than that, I have no objection to continuing the meeting.
Okay. Then I guess I don't need a motion to not cancel the meeting. Mr. Thomas?
Who is attending? Nolan and I assume Jill? I would ask, I mean, I would want to do it if I was attending. Bring back a report and share with us. You know? Because I know we had one back in the fall, and we really didn't hear that much. But Lisa, you made a great touch point when you attended. But it would just be helpful to see what comes of it.
So we actually had that at one time from one of our past retreats, remember, Mr. Jenkins